And Mayor, we're live on both YouTube and Facebook.
Okay, greetings everyone that's here tonight and those that are watching us livestream. Welcome to our regular meeting, first one of July and the only one of July. We're not going on tonight, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order, but before I do, Commissioner Legg is at home resting with his family. He wishes to participate by phone. The consensus of the board is okay with that, and I am gonna call Commissioner Legg, as we have done this in the past, so this is nothing new. I want to make sure that I have him before I call it into order. Commissioner Legg, are you there? Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. You're on speaker, well, not on speaker, but you will be. Okay, call the meeting to order, please rise for the invocation by Greeley Mitchell, King of Commissioner, and remain standing for plec to leave.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today in a military faith. Thanks for your guidance, wisdom, and understanding. We thank you for your blessing, and we thank you for allowing us to wake up today. Dear Lord, as we begin this meeting, why should you strengthen? Show us the way, and fills with courage and wisdom. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions, and allow us to grow closer together as a group, and nurture the bond of love and unity in our community. Forgive us of our sins, and we pray for our town officials, our town staff, and most of all, our citizens and community. We pray for our nation and our leaders. Help us to remember your love and grace, and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us patience to understand and face the challenges of life. And dear God, we pray for the peoples and the locations that was impacted by this weather events of this past week. Bless the families that have lost loved ones. We ask you to grant them comfort, healing, and recovery. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of the world.
Please proceed. I would like to ask here to the party tonight to take a moment of silence for the families in Kerrsville, Texas. That as we sit here, the tragedy that each family member is going through in Texas. The loss of life, the death forms could happen anywhere. They can happen here, they can happen there, at any time. And that is such a tragedy, so take a minute. I might ask everyone to take a minute of silence. Thank you. First item approval agenda, do we have any additions or deletions?
I have a deletion under consent agenda. Item B, the minutes for June 16th were incorrect.
I am, I am B consideration and approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes June 16th, 2025 Special Budget Workshop, Special Meeting under Camp 3. Do you want it removed, or you want it moved?
Well, if need be read. If, I'll be, um, when you read about the, um, the change against the charter, Commissioner Roelius said so moved, and then Mayor Fortem Dr. McCray seconded in the minutes, it has it reversed.
Okay, let's move. I'll ask the Board if they would like to move Item B off consent under New Business. No, I'd have to go under Home Business, right?
Approving the orders as New Business, or, sorry, approving the minutes, approving the minutes.
New Business. All right, under New Business, Item B. Is that your motion, Commissioner Prager? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Commissioner Legg, did you hear about the, about the recommended change? Pardon? Under the consent agenda, item 5, Item B, a motion has been made by Commissioner Prager, seconded by Mayor Fortem Dr. McCray, to move Item B under Item 7, New Business, Item B. We have a motion, we have a second. Are you good? Commissioner Legg, are you good with the move? Okay, all in favor? Did you, you vote affirmative, okay. Saying no opposed, motion carries. Special comments, Item A, managers reported in the cab one.
Pardon me, Mayor, we need a second motion. So you made the motion to move that item under New Business, but we still need to make the motion and vote on the rest of the consent agenda.
No, that was the only.
Oh, I'm sorry, you just brought the additions and deletions, my apologies.
Yeah, we're not too identified. Okay, managers of the board?
Alright, thanks Mayor, welcome Board members and Commissioner Legg via telephone. First page of the Manager's Report for the Community Corner is talking about something that's on the agenda, item on the presentation is the Elevate Hope Mills Community and Business Growth Initiative. What I do have in there is the Community Resource Fair. Mrs. Crystal McLean will get more into details, but it's a business initiative that we're doing to strengthen economic, social, and entrepreneurship landscapes in Hope Mills through small businesses. She'll get into details, but that is on the front page of the Manager's Report. Also, we are recruiting millennials for the Prime Movers. If you know of a kid between 18 and 39, this is our Millennial Commission, created by Dr. McCray, Mayor Fortem, but it's basically a committee that's rooted in doing community service, they do a lot of really meaningful events, and we are recruiting some young minds in Hope Mills. We also have the save the date for National Light Out, August 5th, from 6 to 8 here at Municipal Park. Some of the past events, the Homeless Police Department hosted children from Holler Presbyterian Church in the Public Safety Center, and they did their breakfast with badges a few weeks ago as well. And there's a lot of photographs from the Fourth of July fireworks celebration. Third page is Spring and some of the events in Parks and Rec in terms of fall sports. There's some information about treatment of dogs that we received from Southern Mills Animal Hospital. Next page is the Chamber of Commerce. If you were not aware, there's a new business on Trade Street. Mrs. Ruthie's doing it bakery boutique and tea shop. They had their ribbon cutting on July 3rd, but it is at 5474 Trade Street. I heard the food is really, really good, so I invited everyone to come out and patronize a new business in Hope Mills on Trade Street. The After Hours Chamber Night with Hope Mills Rockfish and the Chamber, that is on July 11th this week. The Chamber is calling for vendors that want to attend at that event, but it's a great partnership with our hometown team, the Hope Mills Rockfish. Door is open at 5:00 PM, game starts at 6:00, right here at Municipal Park. And the last two pages will remain against DOT upgrades or at least updates. As you're aware, they're burrowing right through the golf U-roadway improvements. I do think that a lot of people in the town were interested in a focus specifically on infrastructure improvements, but well I said before, we're here. It's not gonna be pretty, but you have Golf U, Rockfish, Fisher Road, Camden. There are major improvements going on, and I do think that they will result in very positive effects on the traffic. A lot of people may not realize that while these DOT projects are going forward, you will have roadway improvements that are done by the private developers as well. So you have new residential streets coming in through new residential development, you will have roadway improvements, private commercial development, and you have these. So over the course of the next few years, you're gonna see a major elevation of infrastructure in terms of our street improvements here at Hope Mills. And that does include or conclude the Management's Report.
Thank you, Chancellor. I want to start at the end with Commissioner Marley to come down for four comments.
I'd like to welcome everybody, and I'd like to say thank you to Parks and Rec for being able to be live this evening. I wasn't here for the fireworks, but I did participate in the parade. And I feel very well fit to be here, so thank you to Parks and Rec and the rest of the Hope Mills staff that have been working on the heart, it's a hard day.
Thank you, Commissioner Marley, Commissioner Swallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to welcome everyone that came out here tonight, and also same sentiments that Mr. Marley had said about the parade. It was, uh, it was quite warm that morning, and, uh, but it was, it was really, 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 really good, it was fun. It was good to see people out braving the heat, because it was a little sweltering, but it was a good time. And also, there was quite a few people that came out to the ribbon cutting for Ms. Ruthie's Bakery, and just shout out to their, uh, their really delicious banana. Magically delicious.
Magic.
Magically delicious.
Commissioner Prager?
Hello, everyone. I also attended the ribbon cutting, and what was so nice about that, I won't, I'll vlog you, you will rip, I'll just look at the decor that they have inside there. They made all of the wreaths, all the flowers. They have one wall telling stories about the family. The three sisters and a brother named that after their mother, who was 88 years old. I think she's bedridden, could not be there. And that's such a nice sentiment, I think that they could remember their mother and will be using her recipes, and the food is delicious. I got to try it before they opened the day. The parade was wonderful, I had a great time. I had never ridden in a car like I rode in, and with the little kids hollering, "Burn it out, burn it out," and I knew nothing about what that meant. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, I enjoyed it.
Thank you, Commissioner Prager, Commissioner Legg?
I'd just like to say, all of our work in Parks and Rec, and after the month, we're so glad, of course, to be always nice to you. I'd just like to thank you all, all the hard work, the support, the work of our people.
Thank you, Commissioner Legg. Mayor Fortem, Dr. McCray?
I'll just back on what everybody else has said, just to be everybody. I was not able to attend the parade, I saw the pictures that looked really nice and well put together, shipping gears. I would like to congratulate those of you that have filed for office or plan to file for office, all my friends around the state and the county that filed for office today and plan on filing this season, and I will put something out officially, but I will not be filing again in this election. But I do thank the people of Hope Mills at the end of this term, it'll be six years for me, but it's been great serving as a Mayor Fortem for the past six years. So, same to you, I'll be putting something out, and good luck to all of you and all of the citizens that plan to put their name in the hat to serve on this floor.
Thank you, Mayor Fortem. You know, the character of the community can be found in different events. And one of those was the Friday, Saturday events that we had here in Hope Mills with the parade and with festivities at the park. And I want to thank all of the Parks and Rec staff, our police department, fire department, and any town employee that participated in helping make that, make these events a success for our community. Your work was not unnoticed, not at all, because it was quite warm both days. During the time, I talked to a lot of people that continue to ask about two things, and one of them, Chancellor brought up in the Manager's Report, that's infrastructure. There's a lot of concern about infrastructure and the timeline of how this is going to unfold over the next coming months, and how the community is going to be impacted with the road widening, infrastructure budgets. And the other one, I continue to hear more and more and more about, and I'll very loud and clear again on Saturday, Parks and Rec programs. I am not kidding you. Everybody's all in what we're doing with Public Safety, it's all in. We want this board, or the next board that's coming in, to look at Parks and Rec programs and how we can enhance those programs and the end facilities for our community. It's part of our comprehensive strategic plan, it's, we've got in play now. And it's something that we're definitely looking at in the coming year to include the future of what events will go out there on the golf course, since we're looking at something a little different on the footprint of the golf course. So, there's just some comments that I have, just some comments that I've heard from a lot of, a lot of people. So I'm gonna move on to the presentation, Item 3, Item A, Elevate, Hope Mills, Crystal McLean, under Camp 3, welcome.
Alrighty, hey y'all. No, actually, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commission, and Town Staff, and all the residents that are here in the building today. We're excited, it's not just myself alone, I have Ms. Shabika Locke here with me. And today we'll be talking about the Elevate Hope Mills project that will be in a three-part series, and the ultimate goal is economic development. It is the goal of being able to pour back into small businesses. It is the option to also pour back into local residents that may have experienced a lot of challenges financially, and may just need some strategy to be able to flow through and navigate through this season. And so we're gonna be talking about that three-part approach. We'll also be talking about how the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce and Prime Movers, how that collaboration comes together to make sure that this proposal and this project is actually successful. So, we just kind of talked a little bit about the introduction of what the entire goal of this is to serve as a catalyst for long-term business growth, household financial stability, and stronger collaboration. Because if we just invest in business, but we don't invest in the residents, then you still have an imbalance. But if we're investing in businesses and at the same time investing in residents, then we have the ability for residents to invest in those businesses. So it's a strong ecosystem to be able to pour into both sectors at the same time. So Phase 1, which is talked about already for the obvious 2025 date, we have connecting commerce and community. And the overall goal of this program is to be able to get business owners, local business owners in the Hope Mills area in a place where they have visibility. So now they have exposure to other, um, other businesses for collaboration, but they also have exposure to clients that would otherwise not know they existed in the community. The other thing is making sure that there is community resources that serve the residents of Hope Mills, to be able to provide them with resources and to know that they exist as well. And so this overall creates the opportunity for economic development goals to foster entrepreneurship and job creation, but it also equips the residents with knowledge of local resources, support services, and products. Who we will collaborate with, Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce, which will talk a little bit about how our collaboration will look. We'll collaborate with Prime Movers. The Town of Hope Mills Economic Development Advisory Committee will bring in local sponsors to be able to provide food for those that will be in attendance that day. We want to make sure our local banks are highlighted, nonprofits in the area, barbers, spas, and we'll actually have a wellness station there so that people can take advantage of those services, but also be aware of the local businesses. Again, some of the features for the event is there will be a vendor passport activity, so it is gonna be called traveling through Hope Mills. And the goal of that is that the visitors will receive a stamp or an initial at each table, and then once they complete the card, it will be redeemable for a free swag bag. And that swag bag will actually have those local businesses' information, so it is another way for those residents to be aware of the local businesses in the area and to also do business with them. Swag bag will be sponsored by local businesses and partners. We're gonna have live music, maybe not DJ, but we're gonna have a little bit of music. And then we'll have health and wellness booths, so express massages for burnout parents. You know, we may have a skin and the outfits on site, so things where, as well as like blood pressure and screenings and things like that, that will be there to make sure health and wellness is visible. And then we'll have banks and nonprofits to serve as financial and business support partners, and then tables set up. We also, I'm not sure if it's in the slides, but we also will have a segment of the presentation that will be specific for the vendors to connect with one another. Most of the events I've attended as a business owner, when they have these types of events, they're just set up, get in real fast, and if you got somebody else that's at the table, you can go around and connect, but oftentimes if you have someone that's just manning their own station, they don't get a chance to connect with the other partners, which reduces the room for ecosystem building. So now, this business can partner with this business, which increases collaboration and potential contracts. Alright, Phase 2 is the Hope Mills Financial Empowerment Series. This is specifically for the residents. We are planning to launch this in fall 2025. This is after the Community Resource, at the Community Resource Fair, we will actually have information and save the dates for those local residents to apply or to be a part of this three-part evening workshop series. And so it pretty much will be a Tuesday through Thursday from a 6:00 to 8:00 PM type of time block. It'll be talking about managing your money, budgeting, debt reduction, cash flow awareness. It'll be about growing your money, saving, investing, and building generational wealth. And then Class 3 will be talking about protecting your money, making sure that there is some legacy planning, insurance, and risk management costs. And so some of the deliverables that will come out of this empowerment series is if it's done from those residents, they will receive their personal budget, I would say not just a template, but completion, a household debt management plan, savings and investment roadmap, a legacy planning starter kit for those that are still new to that conversation, and then access to bankers, advisors, and tools. A part of this will bring in those financial partners that are already in Hope Mills, so First Citizens Bank in Hope Mills, we have United, uh, United Bank, right. Having those partners there as resources during this three-part series would make it even more stronger for the Hope Mills residents. And then lastly, Phase 3 is the Hope Mills Business Growth Accelerator Cohort. One of the biggest things, I've been in Hope Mills, well, I served in Hope Mills, I grew up in Hope Mills, graduated from Grace Creek High School, and after working in Hope Mills at the First Citizens branch for almost seven years, one of the biggest things I saw is that business owners want that support. They want to know, how do I take my business to the next level? How am I looked at from a founder's standpoint to be able to grow and accelerate? And so sometimes they don't have the ability to look at that in a clean way. So this is the opportunity for them to not just work in the business, but to work on the business for six weeks. And so we'll be talking about strategic business planning, financial health and workcasting, marketing and sales funnels, operations and systems, HR and team growth, but overall, the whole goal and access to capital and government contracts. So even some of the contracts that come through Hope Mills, we want to be able to position them that they actually are in position to apply for those, um, those contracts. And so the outcome is the Business Growth Plan, Client Acquisition Funnel, Revenue Increase Targets, and Connections to Capital and Government Contracts, and then a graduation ceremony and partnership with the Chamber and county leadership. This program has, was done successfully at the FSU hub, and from that, and we're still counting, but so far, those businesses that went through the first and second cohort, we're at $1.8 million in contracts that have been procured since that program that they went through for those six weeks. So it means that they qualify in some ways for these opportunities, but they're not necessarily positioned. We want to make sure that the Hope Mills business owners are positioned so that they be able to qualify for these bigger contracts, and at the same token, that generates more inside the Hope Mills community. So the overall summary and impact is that this is a three-phase plan, ultimately leading to more economic development growth in the Town of Hope Mills. It would increase resident awareness to local businesses to generate stronger revenues to local Hope Mills businesses, which is why the Chamber is going to be such a strong advocate. We will be strengthening the entrepreneurial ecosystem, support workforce development and community resilience, and we know that when we pour into small businesses, small businesses pour back into the community. And so far, we have some additional name options for the Elevate Hope Mills as far as the tagline, "Your Town, Your Time, Let's Elevate." Lifting business, building community, where growth means community, and that's still up for discussion on how we continue to push out the marketing efforts for Elevate Hope Mills. And the next steps, right now I'll have Ms. Shabika Locke, who is with the Chamber to talk a little bit more on how the Chamber, coinciding with this effort, will be able to elevate Hope Mills.
Thank you. Good evening. So at the Hope Mills Chamber, our mission is simple, but it's powerful. Our goal is to sustain and grow a thriving local economy while enhancing the quality of life for our business owners. We are here to support, connect, and empower business like yourself if you have a business here. And even if you don't have a business, we do have an opportunity to use to be involved, to help, maybe you want to one day, someday have your own business, or you just want to be a part as an ambassador. So that's always an option as well. Our mission focuses on three pillars. Those pillars are to educate, advocate, advocate, and then empower. So under educate, that's equipping our members with the, with knowledge and resources to stay ahead in a changing world. Advocate, standing by you when there are challenges. As she was saying with First Citizens, and I'm with United Bank as well, there are challenges when it comes to the small business owners. So we, I hear the same thing, you know, they're looking for resources, they're looking for tools, they're looking for things to help their business grow, and that is a true statement. Give it to the business owners, the small business owners, they're gonna give back to us here in the community. Empowering you, giving you the tools and opportunities to grow, succeed, and make an impact. So this is how the Hope Mills Chamber will collaborate with the Elevate the Hope Mills. Awesome. And that is pretty much where we will begin. A lot of it will begin with marketing, being able to make sure the hopeless residents are aware of our Community Day. We'll leverage our Community Day as a pipeline for the two programs that are coming afterward, especially for the vendors to be a part of the cohort, and then the residents to be a part of the Financial Empowerment Series, and just strong visibility. So if there are any questions, we'll definitely take them right now.
Okay. Crystal, thank you very much for that, for our very nice presentation. It was a nice package in partnership with our Chamber of Commerce. And for the board, go ahead.
Again, very, very awesome presentation. I got some pictures, so you'll be able to get them later. But what people should understand is, they don't have to be a member of a chamber, of any chamber, to get any of this information. So it's gonna be, gonna be really, really good. Especially that Hope Mills is built on small businesses, this is a very good asset for them.
Any other comments? Commissioner Fortem?
Uh, McLean, again, McLean, thank you for your presentation. Uh, I've seen your work, I've thought what you did in the city of Fayetteville, and I know how we can get that here, um, and just have worked with you on some other projects before. And I, I, I've seen your work, and I know that what you do works, and I'm looking forward to collaborating and working with the Chamber. And not only helping our small businesses, but also, um, giving us some financial literacy and empowerment to our citizens as well. So, um, looking forward to this, this partnership.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you for coming. It was a great presentation. That's really, it told it, and I look forward to working with this one.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Um, I would just like to say, like May Pro Tim, I'm happy she is here. Um, I, I've seen her at work, um, in a lot of different avenues. And with Dr. McCraven, it's like we gotta bring her here. So to see this presentation and to see, um, with the Chamber, this is a very holistic approach, uh, to, to elevate Hope Mills. And we've always talked about, even when I said strategic planning, we have the industrial business, we have the commercial, we have the residential. We've always said we wanted to preserve the small-town character of Hope Mills, and you're doing that by focusing on local businesses. I think it's amazing that in addition to that, you can get financial empowerment for residents as well. Partnering with the Chamber, which is the Grand Central Station for local businesses, it's a marriage made in heaven. And so I'm just elated that they are here and that, that this is not a fly-by-night type of event. This is something that we think is gonna make a major mark and not only elevating existing local businesses in Hope Mills, but I'm hoping to attract more small local businesses that want to specifically move here based on what we're offering. We've always said with the Chamber, if I'm a Chamber member or not, what am I getting from being a member of the Chamber? So when people come to these series of events, whether you're a business owner or not, I can walk away with some more financial information to help me in my personal or in my professional life. So I just wanted to say that on the record, and I'm glad we're definitely getting this.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chancellor. Not yet.
Oh, not yet.
Not yet. Financial literacy, one of the legs of the school of this initiative, can benefit not only business owners, but so many residents, so many young people in our community. That is a strong hallmark of what this initiative, besides the partnerships, the collaboration. We have an Economic Development Committee that you'll be a part of as well. And then to work in concert with our comprehensive strategic plan that Ashley Anderson is working on and that in August will be presented to the board, work in concert with that. But the biggest takeaway from this initiative is this. Is that this initiative is going to provide a toolbox of usable tools to business owners and citizens. Because business owners, when they wake up in the morning, they go to work, their, their focus is on customers, their focus is on suppliers. That's what they do all day. But this toolbox that you're about to present to the businesses to elevate their level of operation with the two needs, efficiency and effectiveness, that's the gem. And I thank you both, and thank you both for this outstanding presentation. Let's do good together.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lake, do you have any other comments before I move on? Okay. We getting ready to go into public comments? Okay, Commissioner Craver's looking at the minutes that was subject to change that was moved off the consent agenda to new business to ensure that, uh, that it is correct. Yep, I'm getting ready to wrap it down. While the Commissioners are looking at that change, I wanted to go back and highlight something I forgot to say. I just want to remind everybody that today is day one of filing for local municipal office. It's Board of Elections. From eight to five, all the way to the last Friday, which closes at noon, which is next Friday. Citizens have the opportunity to seek public office and serve this community in one of the positions, either mayor or in commission. It was a lot of people down at Board of Elections today. As we know, Mayor Mitch Kovan is not seeking reelection from the city, so there were three mayor candidates today that filed. And a lot of the city councils were there to file as well. And the other mayors from the other municipalities were there, to include Kia Anthony from Spring Lake. Brian Starling today filed for Hope Mills Commissioner, along with Commissioner Brian Marley. And I'm going to seek a second term as mayor. So, we'll move on to public comments. Each speaker is required to state their name and address. We limit comments to three minutes. And the total comment period will be thirty minutes or less. Speakers should avoid repetition. Groups should be designated as groups, um, as spokesperson. Citizens should have signed up with the town clerk, which they have, before to the meeting. Please direct comments to the full board, not to an individual board member or staff member. And all I ask is just be respectful and proper to form. Although the board is interested in hearing your comments, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subjects matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town official or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Our first speaker is Irene Grimes. Go right down to this.
I didn't realize it was the first one, and you stole half of my thunder, I have to say. Um, I was going to point out that filing started today, that it was a very busy day. Um, there was a lot of candidates, um, down there. And I want to point out, both as a, as someone that serves on the board and as a citizen of Hope Mills, we all know that conversations have gotten passionate, to use a nice term here lightly. And I think it would behoove all of us to tone it down a little bit, um, especially online. Uh, whether you're an elected official, somebody like me who sits on the board, or just a citizen of this town. I think we all need to be more respectful to each other and not expect to get, not expect an echo chamber on social media. Um, and the other thing is, please try not to get your information from social media, whether it be about elections, whether it be about happenings in your community. You know, go to the source, because social media, eighty percent of the time, will not be correct. Um, but as the mayor said, filing goes until the eighteenth. And, um, we're expecting a lot of traffic down there, so please be nice to the staff when you file, because they're very busy. And, um, have a good election season.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Coach Mo.
I'm trying to get the shortest one in the room. I need to move the mic up and set it down. Good evening. Uh, just want to talk about, you kind of scratched the surface of, um, the Parks and Rec programs. Even with Brad having its wonderful celebration, uh, we did have a great turnout. It was a little more comfortably, able to move around a little easier, but, um, like I said in the last time, I stand, stood up here, you know, the Parks and Rec enrollment without the senior citizens programs, without the room rentals, is that just athletics with three thousand athletes instead of the thirty-five hundred that are on the books. It was a hundred and five thousand, and that's registration alone. You know, that's a hundred and five thousand dollars that goes towards our budget or whatever else. Uh, now incorporate all that happens with the seniors, which is great. And hey, tonight, you can't find apartment space between over here, on the side, all the way around the corner. That's great. This community is thriving. It's not sediment, it's not eastover, and I'm not bashing them. But, you know, Spring Lake, and that's a mess within its own self. But we have a thriving community that has three exits right up on ninety-five. Lumberton is hosting the current, um, baseball ICU championships, and they got eight teams, at least thirteen kids. But that's thirteen families, not including, and that's all over the state. I think that if we could bring a stadium here, regardless of where you want to put it, even though we do own a nice large piece of land right up the road, uh, that's not a golf course anymore, it's just sitting there. People get to walk around, that's great. And they can add a screen space by any means. Because what this proposed stadium that was on the books a little while ago, uh, hopefully you can reopen the door to that, will bring a great amount of revenue. I talked to the athletic director of Lumberton, and he, they're anticipating no less than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars within the community in just a two-day time span. When Pembroke hosted previous to Lumberton, that, within that community, in two days, it was two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in that community just alone from Saturday and Sunday. That's not anyone who traveled in on Friday and left on Monday. Um, it's, the Parks and Rec programs are great, uh, ability to generate passive income through registration alone. That's not included concessions and things that I mentioned. Um, and we won't have, I guess, budget issues later, if that line. We get a great stadium coming in, and it will employ a lot of Hope Mills residents, and hopefully we'll see something in the future. Thank you. Y'all both are a good.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, Amanda Tanger.
Good evening. I'm Adrian four-four-four-nine, on State Street. It has become widely clear over the past couple of months, the majority of this board has gone back from their oath to the people of Hope Mills. Once sworn into office, each of you swore to uphold the Code of Ethics for the Town of Hope Mills, which states board members must be able to act in a manner that maintains their integrity and independence, yet is responsive to the interests and needs of those they represent. What occurred at the public hearing last week was directly in contrast to that statement. Between in-person and online, you had roughly ten people speak in opposition to the four-year staggered terms change to the charter. Some were completely opposed, some were opposed in the manner that it was currently outlined. Not one person spoke out in favor of it, yet the resolution moved forward anyways. This is not the first example of the board not listening to the members of Hope Mills. Certain individuals who sit up on the desk speak out against citizen use of social media to voice their concerns and air their grievances. On several occasions, citizens have been told to get involved by attending meetings, sending emails, reaching out. But at least from my perspective, that appears to be a waste of time. At the first board meeting I attended, I asked that the shelter rental rate be reexamined and lowered to be more in line with Fayetteville's prices to encourage townspeople to rent our shelters instead of those in Fayetteville. What was the result of that? Raised shelter rates for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six fiscal year. Thanks for that. Fast forward to last week. Several people spoke out against the change in term length, and despite alternatives presented, no additional discussion or consideration, and the motion was approved. Tonight, it appears the charter will be changed barring a shakeup in members' votes. If y'all are following your oath and being responsive to the interests of those you represent, then where are the townspeople who are in favor of this resolution? Why do those who are supposedly in favor of this not come to share their thoughts? Could it be perhaps that those who are actually supportive in number are minuscule? Surely not, because that would be not demonstrating very good integrity, as agreed to in the Code of Ethics. If passed, it appears that once again, the members of the board will be contributing their oath, but not truly listening to the townspeople. If you really want to act in the interest and needs of those you represent, this should be on the ballot in November. Do not unilaterally allow three people to make a decision affecting eighteen thousand-plus people for the next four years and beyond. You represent that eighteen thousand plus, not just those who work for the town, not just those who support you, not just your family and your friends, but eighteen thousand people. Which sounds more like a democracy, three people voting to make a change on behalf of eighteen thousand or letting the voting population of Hope Mills, approximately twelve thousand, roughly two-thirds of the town's population decide? Personally, I'd like my democracy to be as representative of the total population as possible. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor.
Uh, just to kind of, uh, add to, uh, what you had said now. Um, the feedback I'm getting from citizens of why they don't want to engage is because they're getting bullied. That's coming from them. So I will meet with them offline. I've met with them at the Parkton Grill. They don't want to engage with the people who get bullied, that bully them, so they'll tell us. But they don't want to do it publicly because they don't want to have to deal with that harassment. So I can't, I can't make them come, just like I can't make anyone come to these meetings. So that's, that's what I've been personally with.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Craver. We'll move on to item five, Consent Agenda. Item A. Uh, I did item B, which moved up, and item D. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with those three items.
So, wait, excuse me, Mayor, you, um, skipped item C.
Item A, C, and D. Okay. I have a motion at second, on favor. Did, did, did you approve, Commissioner Lake?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the affirmative, okay, so nonopposed, motion carries, five oh. That's the end of the consent agenda. Next item is item six, Old Business. Second reading, final adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five, tag zero one zero, and ordinance amending Article Three of the Town of Hope Mills Charter to establish four-year staggered terms for the mayor and Board of Commissioners under Tab Six. If we want to have any discussion before we just talk through the vote? You want to say something? Okay?
I really wish that y'all would reconsider and to approve this to go on the ballot in November and let us show our citizens that we are listening to them. They voted for, against it in eighteen, that does not mean that they will vote against it in this election. I do beg you and plead with you that you will not pass this tonight, but to place it on the agenda for November, I meant, on the ballot for November.
Thank you, Commissioner Craver. Any other discussion before it is read? Can we speak for or against it? A public hearing was last week. Any other comments? Okay, Chancellor, or action, or interregarding?
Okay, um, I'm reading the staff report, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. On June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners have a special meeting. Resolution of intent R. twenty twenty-five dash oh-one-four was adopted, expressing the desire to move forward, move toward four-year staggered terms for the mayor and Board of Commissioners. The public hearing on adopted resolution R. twenty twenty-five dash oh-one-four was then scheduled for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at six P. M. Notice of the public hearing was duly advertised to the Sunshine List on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and published in the February Observer on June twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The second reading and final adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh-one-oh by the Board of Commissioners will be applicable in the upcoming twenty twenty-five election. However, pursuant to G. S. one sixty-eight dash one oh-three, a referendum on the charter amendment could be submitted. Should there be no petition, the four-year staggered terms will be effective, effective on November twenty twenty-five ballot. North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash one oh-nine requires the board to have the ordinance adopted at least ninety days before the election, in which the ordinance will take effect. The town clerk will then file a certified copy of the amended- The town clerk will then file a certified copy of the amended charter with the Secretary of State and Legislative Library pursuant to N C General Statute one sixty-eight dash one eleven, and then coordinate with the Board of Elections in order to have time to have the ballots printed to reflect the change.
Referenced in the reading, the General Statute one sixty-eight dash one zero-three, referendum on charter amendments by ordinance. An ordinance adopted under General Statute one sixty-eight dash one zero-two, that is not made effective upon approval by a vote of the people, shall be subject to a referendum Upon receipt of a referendum petition bearing the signatures and residence addresses of a number of qualified voters of the city equal to at least ten percent of the whole number of voters who are registered to vote in, in city elections, according to the most recent figures certified by the State Board of Elections, four or five thousand, whichever is less, the council shall submit an ordinance adopted under General Statute one sixty-eight dash one zero-two to a vote of the people. The date of the special election shall be fixed on a date permitted by General Statute one sixty-three dash two eighty-seven. A referendum petition shall be addressed to the council and shall identify the ordinance to be submitted to a vote. A referendum petition must be filed with the city clerk, town clerk in our case, no later than thirty days after publication of the notice of adoption of the ordinance. I wanted to read that into the record as far as clarification about a petition or referendum. So, any other comments? Mr. Lee, do you have anything? Go ahead, sir.
I have one. John, you might have a nice laugh. I would like to take this time to announce that I am resigning from this board expected at the end of the term because of my health. Uh, I can't keep not going to meetings and expect people to respect me. So I'm resigning from that board. It's been a pleasure working with every board member that I've ever served with, and send up my mighty high. Um, you know, if you want to take a leave or about going, some of these boys are the best that you could ever want to serve with. So, I need to just let everybody know that, that I love each and every one of you, I love this town, I do anything for this town, except run for another office. I appreciate your time, that you stand with me, and transferred you and Ben, and Drew, uh, you've been great, that's all I got to say, you've been great. And I don't want to make this a blow drawn out thing, I just want to do is get you over with. So, I'll be back down there, in honor of the ten commission. And this, uh, all you people, I'll miss you greatly. I will miss you greatly.
Yeah, Commissioner Lee, I just want to make sure that you're, you're going to serve out the term, is that correct?
I probably won't serve out my term.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you're going, that you'll serve out this term.
I'll serve. I will serve you if I have.
Okay. All right. All right, back to, uh, the issue at hand, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second to adopt the final adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one zero. Is there any further discussion from the board members? Seeing none? All in favor?
Hmm.
All opposed?
All opposed.
Okay, Commissioner Craver is opposed, Commissioner Lee is opposed, the ordinance passes three to two.
Now, a long person in this community came out here and supports you, and here you are doing this. I don't understand. I have no idea, and I don't think...
Ron, you know, you know... Ron, thank you very much. No, you're out of order, sir. You're out of order. Next item under new business is, uh, item A, zoning one oh-one workshop presentation plan, that's under Tab Six.
Did we skip over the additional items for new businesses?
Item B.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Move to item B.
Xavier, it is passing around the handout to the new presentation. These are the same handouts that are always available on the back table, um, explaining information, the steps to do rezoning, annexation, initial zoning, and our second phase of process.
You got two more? Put them on.
I was asked to begin this presentation to do basically a quick summary of how zoning works. So, I did include my email and Xavier's email address at the end, if you have any additional questions, in case we need to do any research, we can get back. So I have here the definition of zoning that is in the Town Law Book, and it reads, "A police power measure enacted by the Board of Commissioners pursuant to the nation's statutes in which the town is divided into districts or zones within which permitted conditional and special uses are established," as are regulations governing block size, building, bulk, placement, and other development standards. Requirements vary from district to district, but they must be uniform within districts. So what is the purpose of zoning? I have a few examples listed here. One of the most important functions of zoning is to separate incompatible land uses and help prevent conflicts between different types of land use. Zoning also helps to preserve community character that contains property values by following guidelines for building types, heights, density, and more. Zoning helps to maintain the aesthetic and functional character of it, which helps to protect the listing property value from threatening incompatible or unfavorable developments and uses. Zoning helps to guide the pace and pattern of urban development, ensuring that it aligns with available public services and infrastructure, which helps to prevent urban sprawl and encourages plant survival. Zoning helps to ensure public services, open spaces, and houses are efficiently allocated by and to benefit future needs and development patterns. One of the tools that's utilized in zoning Hope Mills to help keep certain uses of properties in certain areas within the public domain is plan. Amendments to zoning from maps adopted by any municipality or district have governed by the General Statute one sixty-dee, primarily one sixty-dee dash six oh-two, and General Statute one sixty-eight dash zero-four, for notices of violation. These regulations also govern notices to the public, the general public, and the entities in the neighborhood. So we will post a property, and that is a notice must be prominently posted on-site for those rezoning cha-change. The town officials utilize large interest signs that have QR code on it. We, we mainly notices must be mailed to affected landlords and local somebody, such as property, tend to join companies, and of course, get it away. The scheduled public hearing timeframe, the post must occur no sooner than twenty-five days prior to the hearing, and no less than ten days prior. The content of notices include the location of the property, the nature of the request, the date, time, the mediation of the public hearing associated with the request. It also mentions that the information is on the top of the site. This is an example of our zoning sign, I'm sure everyone must see one by now, um, that we post whenever we have zoning plans. So regulations that define this public hearings, zoning cases, and north of the line are also governed by, again, the General Statute one sixty-dee, that requires a public hearing notice to be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the relevant area of the subject property. For us, that's the Fayetteville's. Publication is General Statute one sixty-dee dash six oh-one, mandates a public notice of a hearing on zoning matters be published in a newspaper. The notice must be published once. The first publication of hearing at least ten days, but not more than twenty-five days in front of hearing. In general, I try to post the legal ad two Mondays, like one Monday and two Mondays before the actual meeting. Uh, the newspaper must be done, must be one general circulation in the area widely read and available within the community. The notice should indicate the time, date, and location of the hearing, as well as specific matter under consideration. And for applying for zoning of a property, um, which process we go through is, it depends. We have to look at several aspects to determine which direction to go for zoning approval. Several things have to be considered, such as what do you want to do with the property? What is the current use of the property? Is there adequate parking for the intended use? If it's an undeveloped property or lot, do you have plans, as in site plans? Is the property properly zoned for the intended use, or will you need to request a rezoning? Is it a situation where annexation is needed, followed by initial zoning? Or is it something that might just simply need a zoning permit? Here is an example showing the different zoning districts that are within Hope Mills. On the left is all of the residential zonings, the top of being rural residential, all the way down to R five, and the depend, the changing of the different residential zonings more or less means the size, I mean, the general size of the lots, um, the density that is allowed, for example, if you wanted to do apartments on one of those properties. And then on the right is not residential, so we have Conscernancy District, Office and Institutional, Planned Global District, I mean, Planned Global Business, Planned Service and Retail, Planned Commercial, Planned Industrial, and Planned Light Industrial. The required path for zoning approval will dictate the process the applicant will have to follow, such as rezoning, annexation, followed by initial zoning, conditional zoning, special use permit, variance, or just a simple zoning permit. The path of annexation into the town is as follows. This is an example if someone were to decide they wanted to annex the property into the town, these are the steps that have to be taken. They have to submit a completed annexation packet with required attachments and repeat. At the next scheduled board of commissioners meeting, it is a formal acceptance of the annexation, where the board grants permission to the clerk to do an investigation of self-sufficiency, which I believe was in the next consent agenda. At the following meeting, the clerk verifies the packet meets the self-sufficiency requirements, and then requests permission to schedule the public hearing. Typically, this is set during the next regular scheduled board meeting. In the meantime, the clerk runs the legal ad in the newspaper announcing requests for annexation, and the dates of the hearing, at least ten days before the hearing per North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash thirty-one speed. Once presented and the public hearing held, should the commissioners vote to accept the request for annexation, we request permission to pursue initial zoning of the property, as the newly annexed property is now considered to be unzoned and must be assigned a zoning district per North Carolina General Statute one sixty-dee dash two oh-two. So the required path for initial zoning and rezoning is virtually the same. The main difference is that one is being assigned a zoning immediately after annexation, the other is for a property that is currently inside the town limits and the owner's requesting to change the current zoning. And these are the steps to do both processes. Submit complete initial zoning slash rezoning application, um, at this time, we've also included the planning department sends out a request for comments to all the department and to team and department. Once all comments are collected during the time allotted, a staff report is created on the face, and the public, the planning board packet is created. The planning board tries to post the property with a sign, post the planning board packet on the website, and send out the notices of hearing to the adjacent property owners all on the same day, which is ten to twenty-five days before the regular scheduled planning board meeting. After the notifications are sent to the adjacent property owners and the property is posted, residents are encouraged to call, email, or stop by and inquire about the case. The case is brought before the planning board for review, they make a recommendation for approval or denial for the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners, and that meeting date is announced during the planning board meeting. During the Board of Commissioners meeting, the case will be presented to the board, and the floor will be opened up for anyone to speak for or against the request, as well as answer any questions. After the floor is closed, the commissioners vote to approve or deny the request. If the case is approved, the planning department will inform the county of the changes, the government county's zoning map, if any, or room designs, what is it on the property during the same week it may be called. There's also the final step I did not include on there, um, I always send out an approval letter, I try to send it out the same week to the applicant to let him know that the prop, the zoning request was approved, and that they can take the next steps to do like site plan approval or whatever, what is the church.
Okay. Thank you very much. Comments? Anything, Commissioner Roy?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, it, I understand, contrary to what people say, I do understand credit the zoning is, I try to get as much information as possible. One thing I didn't understand, um, or didn't realize that, that with the newspaper stuff. Now, you know, the people, the observers kind of struggling, if we don't have any local newspaper, how else would that information get put out? Or we'll cross that bridge when we get to it kind of thing?
Yes, um, I think that we would have to go with the next best newspaper in the area. Yeah.
Okay. Will you have a comment? All right, very informative, thanks very much. Move on to item B, move talk to consent, consideration and approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes, June sixteenth, and that was under Tab Three. The board has been presented a corrected copy, board members have reviewed it, so do we have a motion and a second?
I think a motion that we accept in minutes for June the thirtieth?
Thirty.
Um, as we read.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, I think Commissioner Lee jumped off her phone. Um, so the motion passes, no, no one opposed. All right. Last item is item eight, informational items, here are reminders, July ninth is the, the sort of preservation commission meeting. Uh, appearance commission is July twenty-second, Parks and Rec is June, July twenty-eighth, and we will be back here August fourth for our next meeting. Staff comments? Again, I'd like to thank all of our staff for their dedication and hard work to support this community. It was very evident with the Fourth of July celebration... It was very evident with the Fourth of July celebration that there was a lot of effort put in to the success of those events. We have a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We are adjourned. All right?